There you go.
That's okay.
Not for Judy's sake, it's not.
Are you happy?
Much. It's not about me, it's about Judy.
All right, so we're calling the March 7th regular meeting of the zoning commission to order at 7:02. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They'll need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversations for after the meeting as additional voices can cause confusion for those attending virtually. And we'll call the roll. And since Judy isn't here, I guess I'll call the roll. Marzullo, I'm here. Crew?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Manley?
Here.
Kayla's?
Here.
Kayla's?
Kayla.
Kayla's?
You got it, you nailed it. You nailed it.
Killing me. All right, and I guess we'll start with the oath of office and then we can assume that Amanda Lakis and Long are here for their oath of office.
They are here.
Yep.
And I think we'll do it in Suriano.
Okay. Sure.
So, either one of these, who wants to go first?
Pretty long.
You know, some rest of it.
Good?
Here's good, I think. Say good? No, don't, don't run out of the room. Uh, so, I, Andy, Amanda Lakis. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a zoning commission alternate.
The duties of a zoning commission alternate.
For Henkley Township.
For Henkley Township.
In Medina County.
Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my term on the zoning commission board.
During my term on the zoning commission board.
And Andy, I think will be a great addition to the board. He has, he's got practical experience in dealing with zoning, with construction of his own home and being in the industrial industry. He's done a lot in terms of developing codes and things like that. So, very structured, organized person. So, I think a good perspective for the board. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I.
I, Brian Love.
Do, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duty of a zoning commission alternate.
The duties of a zoning commission alternate.
For Henkley Township.
For Henkley Township.
In Medina County.
In Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my term.
During my term.
On the zoning commission board.
On the zoning commission board. Thank you.
And Mr. Long has an extensive threshold work experience in a lot of different areas. He's done a lot of developing operational guidelines and quite new things, offering things, and providing a very outside perspective and analytical mindset that I think would be very beneficial also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations to both of our new alternates. Welcome to the team. The first and actually only thing that's on the agenda this evening.
Sure.
Do you just want to run through the guests so that Judy? Thank you for pointing that out, yes. So additionally, we have trustees Engelmann, Sweattick, and Ashroll, as well as zoning inspector Wilson in the audience. And the only item on our, on our agenda this evening that was beforehand is approving the meeting minutes from our February 1st meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes? And were there any adjustments or changes that y'all noticed? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Crew?
Second.
Second by Fisher? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Manley?
I wasn't there. Staying.
Okay, so, all right, we're good. Pass that along. Thank you. And you'll notice that if, for longtime watchers, we adjusted the agenda slightly with now we have our future consideration topics at the bottom of the agenda. So that anyone that has an issue that they'd like to bring before the zoning commission, you can see what we're already tracking on our radar. And really, the short-term rental units is somewhere between new business and old business that I think we're going to address that this evening. Wait for those minutes and come back down.
You gotta take it up there. I guess you can.
Thank you. All right, so, in doing a little bit of research, obviously, the, the short-term rentals have been popping up as far as zoning considerations all across the state. There are certain places that are just putting, just flat-out bans on short-term rentals. Other places that are putting them in as something that needs to be, they, they need to have a permit and there are fines if they don't have a permit. And, you know, I want to kind of start by seeing where everyone's appetite is. If you want to look at the, the definitions that we already have, they are on page 12, I'm sorry, no, page 14 of the zoning resolution. And we have two short-term rental definitions. The first is short-term dwelling rental. Any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for not more than 30 consecutive.
I'm missing some pages in the new book. Is anyone else missing pages?
I don't have either.
Just so we know.
Okay, are those?
They might just be.
Those might be just the.
Modified pages.
No.
Start with page 16.
That could be.
Those are the modified pages that she gave. We sent an email today asking for an entire new book.
Yeah, so I've got the new one. And you guys just have the modified ones to throw into your existing books.
Okay. Everybody.
Yeah, she told me about it this morning, but then I found the email later this afternoon with you requesting entire new book. She may have already been gone for the day.
Well, she put together a heck of a book for all of us up here with a lot of new tabs that is a lot of really good information. So Suzanne, I really appreciate that. Anyways, back to short-term dwelling rental. Any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner, or other interested party receives monetary compensation, and the primary resident is not present and personally living on the premise during the time of rental. The next definition we have is short-term owner occupied dwelling rental. Any dwelling of which a portion is rented for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner, or other interested party receives monetary compensation. I vaguely recall in our conversations that we had something about the, the owner being on premises for that owner occupied dwelling rental. And obviously, we removed it before we went into the final text amendment. Does anybody else recall that conversation at all?
Kind of. I do remember we talked about it, but I didn't remember if that was a final or not.
No, I mean, it, it wouldn't have gone through as a final.
Right, we did, we did speak on it.
Because there, there, the two definitions are incredibly similar with, with the, the only difference being that the primary resident isn't present on the second, on the first one. Short-term dwelling rental.
And the, the first one is the entire facility, as the second one is a portion.
And I guess to, to begin with, it's, it's worth pointing out that there, there is a House bill that's made it out of committee. It has not been passed by the, the House, the Ohio House yet. And it's House Bill Number 563. And there are, there are a couple of things that are specific to this conversation. It, it states short-term rentals are specifically called out as something which, they say, no county, township, or municipal corporation shall adopt or enforce any regulation, restriction, or other resolution or ordinance that does either of the following. Prohibits short-term rental properties. Regulates the number of, number, duration, or frequency of rental periods for short-term rental properties. There's a lot more into it as well, but I, I think that's something worth pointing out as we begin the discussion because right now, as, as you go through and you start doing some research into what other townships, what other cities are doing with, with respect to short-term rentals, it's kind of a patchwork. And this bill, although it's not law, and who knows if it will become law, kind of lets us know where the Ohio legislature is looking. Meanwhile, you've got individual municipalities that are doing things that are completely contradictory to what they're trying to enact. For example, you look at North Royalton, and they recently passed some, some zoning that, that limits the number of days the dwelling can be rented throughout the course of one year to 14 days. You go to a couple, to, to another one, and every six months, the, and this is a village as opposed to a township, that every six months they have to submit their, basically their earnings statement, even if it's zero, so that they can be, they're, they're then required to pay a 3% tax every six months on what they've made on that, on their dwelling.
Like a hotel tax.
Exactly. And then you're looking at, Columbus has different laws, Cincinnati has different laws or regulations. And then, and then you look at some places where what they're saying is, all right, you have to come before the BZA, get a variance, and.
Conditional use or variance?
Conditional use. So that you're, you're going to have to get a conditional use, and if you're found to have been in violation and you're using it without getting the conditional use and registering with the township, then you owe a $500 fee, for instance. And I mean, it's, as I said, there's, there's a patchwork of things that are going on, whereas other places are just saying, all right, we're going to stall it indefinitely, and that's not for us to decide. That would be more of a trustee issue. They're, they're just putting a moratorium on it until there's more clarity across the state. So, I think to begin with, we need to figure out, all right, what is our appetite as far as tackling this? And how do we go about eating the whale? Because it's, it's a big one. And as, as we've seen from Mr. Wilson's report last week, or last month, is, you know, this is, this is already starting to pop up. One thing that's kind of interesting about the House bill is whatever regulations are put in place need to be the same regulations applied to long-term rentals as well. So you, you can't say, all right, short-term rental, you can only rent it out X number of times, but long-term rental, it's totally fine.
Yeah. They've been working on legislation since we came up with these definitions too, three years ago. And they've, I mean, it's morphed a little bit. The, the legislation that was proposed at that point was that townships would be banned from, from any sort of regulation regarding short-term rentals. So I, I don't think that we should necessarily wait to see what the legislator does on this because it could be multiple sessions. This is a House bill, that doesn't mean the Senate will take it up or agree with whatever the language is of the House bill. So, you know, I, I think that this is certainly a topic that we want to discuss. Miss Inspector Wilson, I think, has mentioned at our last meeting, maybe, that, that this has come up recently. You know, I would lean towards putting it as a conditional use and coming up with some considerations for the BZA, just like we have for other conditional uses, and, and see where it falls, just to start doing something with it. The one thing that I do want to caution, and I talked about this last time with respect to a, a different topic, but it's the same consideration, is, you know, we have many parcels that are 40, 50, 60 acres, and we got to make sure that we're doing something in our zoning that is providing economic value to those parcels so that they're not at the end of their life as a farm. The only suitable use is a development. And so potentially, for some of those uses, in particular, you could see a bed and breakfast being a very viable use. And so it's something that we might want to consider as something that we are encouraging. Again, it just depends on how we want to look at this, but I do think that one of the things that we need to consider is what other things we can do in our zoning that provides some economic value to those parcels. And bed and breakfast seem like a pretty, pretty reasonable one. The other thing is, when you look at these short-term dwellings, they're using them as a quasi rental for purposes of weddings. And so, you know, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing. It's something that we should consider as, as we do this to, again, you know, it, it's a, it's a part of the, the equation here.
Your thoughts?
I gave you no direction on that, but.
No, I mean, I mean, the, the point about the, the B&amp;B, and, and really, when you, when you started talking about the B&amp;B, I thought you were going more the shared driveways. That's, that's.
That's what I brought it up with last time with respect. I didn't think some economic value.
Yeah.
But I think it's applicable to this sort of thing too, in terms of, you know, maybe a, a second suitable alternative as opposed to developments for some of these things is to allow them to become bed and breakfast, or to allow them to become some sort of short-term housing where they can generate some revenue off the property and sustain these properties as something other, you know, because the property's going to sell for 1.2, 1.3, 1.5 million dollars. And so you've got to have something else that a person could purchase it for, for that level of money.
Then I, I, well, I, I understand and like the idea of trying to keep the large plots together, or as, as together as possible. I think if we start opening up to have B&amp;Bs, now you're looking at, all right, we're going to have.
That's the other side.
Businesses in residential areas.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's kind of where I look at with, with the short-term rentals too, is like, what the House bill says, I get it. It's, I, I really do. But simultaneously, there's a big, big difference between my neighbor renting out their house to a tenant who's going to live there for a year, two years, five years, and renting it out every weekend to someone else. There's, there's a substantial difference there as, as someone in the community. And I, I, I don't know what direction we go with that. I, I don't think banning it outright is, is where my head is. I, I think it's something that as, as a property owner, you, you have the right to do what you want with your property, until it starts to interfere with the rights of other folks. And I, I, I think that's kind of where we, where we as a commission came across, and the only parallel I can, I can really come up with recently is the, the Scream Park down at Buzzard Cove, where, look, they're, they're trying to make money on their property, and they have every right to do that, until it starts to interfere with all of the other properties around them.
The enjoyment of other people on their property.
Exactly. And, and it, we're, we're stuck trying to find, all right, where's the balance on this? How do we do this?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any input?
I just recall the, the last time we talked about the short-term rentals. I think we were stuck on where we were zoning as far as what areas we were going to allow them, if we recall. Because that's where my, where I, I, I put my feet down. Because I, it's my recollection that quite a few on the board felt that the short-term owner occupied dwellings, bed and breakfasts, or whatever, should only be allowed in business areas. And I believe the other short-term rentals were allowed in residential. And I'm still in disagreement with that, if those are, your still, your thoughts, because they're both businesses. It's, uh, who's to say that the other rental is going to be a rental for a year, or two years, or six months, or not? But they're both businesses and.
Well, generally speaking, the difference would be, the, I mean, the, the, the lease agreement is going to tell you that it's going to be.
Correct. But, but the short-term definition is more, for not more than 30 consecutive days.
Yeah, so 30 or less.
Right.
So you're, you're saying, your, your, your contention is that both are ostensibly businesses?
Businesses, yes.
All right.
So we do allow some businesses within residential districts, right? I mean, we have.
We do.
Home-based businesses, we have home, there's another one, it's home-based and occupied businesses. So we do allow some businesses in the, in the residential district.
Right.
Those are all conditional use, aren't they? The one is an accessory use, the other one is a conditional use.
Well, it's all through BZA.
No, the one is a.
It's supposed to be.
The one is an accessory use, the other one is conditional.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's home occupied is accessory, the other one is conditional.
So I was checking out some of the townships up towards Sandusky, where they do more of this. And they all have language that's kind of put in. And just looking through some of it, they do make it conditional use, at least the one that, this is Washington Township. They make it conditional use for matters. Where it sounds like, there's, you know, obviously the fear, I think the last time was the reoccurring issues, maybe with noise complaints and neighbor complaints, kind of what we're seeing here. They would, because it was conditional use, they would, they would give the people that, that own the residence two complaints where, where there was obviously something going on, either unlawful or unsafe conduct. And then they, they would have to kind of come back after the 12 months was up and then reapply, and they could revoke their conditional use at that point. That's how they, they work it up there.
So basically letting the, having the BZA be truly the judicial arm, which is, which is how it's set up anyways. And that would actually end up being a hearing, so that if it, if it's just random, okay, I don't want this to be a short-term rental, so I may complain because someone pulled in late at night. You'll, you'll have reports on those that.
They could use discretion.
Yeah. They'll, they will hear and be able to ask questions about every complaint before they actually make any sort of decision on it. Is, is, would that be how that would normally run, Mr. Manley?
Yes, absolutely. They would, they would, they have at least one hearing.
Yeah.
Sometimes we roll it over to get more information. Yes, and each, each person that had, that had property in the area would obviously get an opportunity, be notified and have the opportunity to testify in the name of any other interested party once all the neighbors, if you will, had their, their say.
So in a sense, it's, it's a safeguard against any of the frivolity of.
No, it's, it's not a perfect safeguard, but it's a safeguard. And of course, you have the light of day, hearing all these things where the sponsor, the owner, whatever, we're going to call this person and say, no, that, that won't happen, we'll be doing this, and so on and so forth.
Do you recall if the BZA is, I'm, I'm not so sure that the BZA generally revokes conditional uses.
No, I, revoke it? No.
Revoke it. And so.
Well, there's, there's some discussion, there's been discussion about that, that if you don't do this, then this is what happens.
I can understand if you don't meet the conditions that were initially laid out. My question is, the subsequent one-year, it's almost like a renewal period if I'm, if I'm listening correctly. And that's the part.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that the BZA has ever just reviewed and had the option to take away someone's conditional use.
There, there was a time, but we were told, you know, I was still on the BZA chair at the time, that once you issued this, as long as they were doing what you originally agreed to, even though different things could, may have changed that should change that agreement, you, you could not revoke it.
But if one of the conditions is having two or fewer complaints against you.
Correct, whatever.
Wouldn't that require then that if, if there are two complaints, then they would have to come before the BZA?
Well, if I were sitting in the BZA, how do we determine a complaint? Because somebody next door that heard some extra noise at 10:30 at night, and I used to go to bed at nine o'clock, but they called the police, is that, you know, how do we determine what's a legitimate complaint and what's just bellyache?
And, and do we end up ultimately kind of bogging down the BZA with.
Yes, yes, yes.
With, with these kinds of.
They're not a complaint department, they're trying to determine.
Yep.
I, I'd kind of be interested as to what legal set if we could even do that, because again, you would think that the BZA would often put that on. You know, they could say for senior housing, well, if you have more, more than two complaints over the course of a year, you've got to come before us. And then, oh, one year after they make the investment, we revoke their conditional use. It doesn't seem like that would be lawful, but potentially, it's a consideration.
Could you make it something more, right? I mean, it's Sandusky, so, I mean.
Is that a?
Well, we're a township now. We operate on.
That's Washington Township up towards Sandusky. You know, what, what are they dealing with? They're probably, probably drinking with people partying a little bit more up that way.
I think it's a, it's a good way to explore, I would just.
Absolutely, I mean, probe, ask the questions and see, hey, is this, is this something that we can, we can do? And, you know, just the, the limited amount of reading that I did on it, like, basically, the, the people that are lobbying for this bill are saying, any sort of regulation that limits short-term rental properties are going to be challenged if this, if this resolution gets passed as written. Now, as Marcus pointed out, what's the likelihood it gets passed as written? Pretty, pretty low, especially since they've been working on it for three years. There's, there's going to be some flip-flopping on it. So, to your point, yeah, there's no point in dragging our feet, waiting on, on the state legislature to act when it's an issue in our backyard now.
So along with this, you know, obviously, if, if there's conditional use, it's, if it's dictated by conditional use, they're saying that they keep everything up to date. So if there's a change of address, there's contact information for all of the, the owners or whatnot. Do you think it would be, it would make sense to inquire where these short-term rentals, you know, what, whatever it is, Airbnb, or the VRBO, or whatever, what are the contracts that they're signing? Would that, you know, just to kind of see what their help to as well, that make any sense to kind of tell us where.
I think, honestly, I think one of the things that we're running into, it goes back to when we were first getting the, the definitions and just defining them. John, I think it might have been you, John, that asked, how many of these are in the township? And I didn't know the answer. It was like two or three.
Oh, there's plenty of them now.
But the, but what I, what I neglected to follow up with is, but potentially, how many could there be? Literally, every home in the township could become an Airbnb if people wanted to do that. And that's, that's where I think we need to look at this and say, all right, how do we, how do we make sure that this doesn't get out of hand very, very quickly? Because potentially, it could. Because potentially it could.
Chairman, you haven't spoken with Denise DeVestia yet on this, have you?
Not yet.
I'd be very curious to see what townships she's aware of in Medina have approved this. And then just collect some sample language and at least give us some, some start, sort of starting point on crafting language. I would imagine that anyone that's doing this, if they're not outright banning, which I, I'm, again, not so sure that they could, would probably put as a conditional use. So I suspect most of the language.
Literally a month and a half ago, I know Streetsboro isn't a township, but they just put a moratorium in a month and a half ago, like January twenty-second and said, nope, we're not doing this. We, we are gonna fit, we're gonna completely update the language. Because I mean, Streetsboro is also very different from Hinckley in the sense that they have five other locations that either it's a motel or a hotel if you wanna find a bed for an evening. So it's, it, we don't have that luxury to say, alright, there's, there's no real need for this. Um, but it, it, it can be done, should it be done is really more the question.
The other thing the state's tackling now is the affordability crisis, the housing affordability crisis, and they're trying to find uh, ways to work around that. And, and you know, technically this would lend to that, that would take more um, houses uh, off the market for just private buyers, people that wanna raise families. So anything to discourage it?
And that's, that's a pretty macro issue.
It is.
And, and I, I think that's something that um this, this, this might be a, a very small subcomponent of that, so um I, I, I don't know how much, how much weight that carries in, in, in the, the decision process for me personally. Housing affordability, especially here.
Hey.
I mean, there, there are plenty of places within a fifteen, twenty-minute drive of here where it's, houses are quite a bit more affordable than here. So, I, I mean, that's just how I would weight it when I'm, when I'm considering things.
I just wonder if it draws more attention to us, that's all. Right? If, if the value, I mean, obviously, there's not a lot of houses for sale around here to begin with. And if the value just keeps rising, because that's, you know, a viable business here, um, does that draw attention from, you know, I mean, they're talking about doing away with the zoning, they're talking about a lot of things at the state level. Taking away a lot of control, so that, that's, you know, I look at everything, obviously.
Not. The cynic in me says not taking away, but them taking control of it.
Yeah, the proposal is to move it to the county.
Yeah.
To remove it.
Yep. Sorry. So I mean, I think the, the the, the first step here is, I, I really like your suggestion there, uh, Marcus. Talk to Denise, see which, see what kind of language we're seeing throughout the, uh, throughout the county. As well, you know, if, if any of you have any time that you wanna look into some of the other townships around the state, um, I'm definitely could be looking into the Washington Township of how they're doing that. And figuring out, alright, is there any sort of legal hurdles to doing it that way? Because I, I do think that, that gives us an opportunity to have, to be very well-informed as to what's going on in the township. As well as keeping it from getting too out of control. I, I found another township where you had to apply for a, a permit. And there is an application fee, obviously. If you got approved, then there could not be another short-term rental within five hundred yards. Which out here, I mean, wouldn't limit it that much.
Yeah, three houses.
Exactly. So I mean, you, you're, you're not gonna end up with a, with a short-term rental district if you do it that way. But um, I guess that would.
Then incentivizes the first mover and harms every other person around them.
Exactly. Especially in the uh, Conservation District or Developments. There's, there's, there are a few different uh, roads to go down and based on kind of our conversation here, I think it's something that we all agree needs to be tackled. Now, Michelle, it, it seems like you're kind of saying, alright, it's a business, it should only be in the business cell, is that?
Oh, no, I, you guys, I was not the person who said it should be in the business.
Okay.
I was the one who said they should be the same, however, we are gonna zone them.
I do remember some discussion, but I kind of think it was the opposite of what you said in that we were, we were talking about letting bed, bed and breakfast where the primary owner is at the home, being in the residential district, because the owner would be there to at least help control what's happening at the property and the noise level and things like that. Whereas short-term where the owner's not present, we would move to the business district because uh, more noise is often associated with the business district. I think that that was where that discussion went, if I remember. Could be totally mistaken. We had at that point, so at least where that portion of the discussion was.
And, and I think that's also why we ended up having the two separate definitions instead of just short-term rentals. Yeah, but it's also been three years, we, and it, we were definitely all over the place trying to define it, because it's, it's a complex. I remember someone even, even wanted us to change it from thirty days to a month. Because February has twenty-eight days. What's interesting though is if you look at it from the state level, they actually defined it as thirty days as well, so.
And, and we did talk about some sort of registration process, so that the police were aware, fire department was aware. We, we, we had a lot of discussions.
Yeah, I've, I've got a file like this.
Right. I mean, I think it was.
In a box somewhere. It was at least a six-month topic.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And I think um, the planning commission, they're having the meetings, correct, the trainings, I believe short-term rentals was going to be discussed.
I just had that. Oh, I didn't bring with me. Are you going?
Well, yeah, I'm going to some of them, but she mentioned it, I don't believe it was like an actual topic. But I think she mentioned it at the last one. Do you remember? You were there.
For me? No.
No.
I know I talked to her about it afterwards. I, I kind of brought it up.
Someone brought it up during the meeting and she said, she said something like she thinks that's a great topic that we should be discussing.
Okay, she didn't really dive into.
For comprehensive planning?
No, but she said she thinks that's something that we should be talking about. So, and I didn't, I, I interpreted that they were gonna talk more on their, in their training meetings.
Is that gonna be in the comprehensive planning or current?
She didn't identify the.
Or, or she, going forward, maybe she was.
They probably won't, because they've set all the meeting topics, I think, for this year, so it'd probably be a topic for next year.
For next year or something, yeah.
Okay. She recommended calling the Ohio Townships Association, just to kind of feel them out. So I did that actually today, and I, I spoke with Kyle, I believe his name was over there. So he was helpful.
Yeah.
Concord Township was another one that he was talking about, you know, being a destination. And maybe, uh, you know, I guess giving us some guidance, so.
And I, I've been, I, I was speaking with some folks down in Prairie Township. And uh, they're kind of in a similar but completely different situation. They're, they're a township that is like literally just outside of the two seventy ring in Columbus. So.
Should they be taken over by Columbus next year?
No. Um, ultimately, they're, they're having these Airbnbs down there, but it's not like there's a shortage of hotel rooms in Columbus. So uh, the, it's something that they're struggling with as well. And I, I mean, they, they, they actually have some pretty robust zoning regulations down there, so I'll be curious to see how theirs shake out as well. And I'll keep in contact with them.
Good.
Do either of our new members have anything worth uh, adding?
Sure.
Yeah, just your name.
Brennan Long. Um, just, I, I'm, I'm skeptical by nature from law enforcement. Uh, absolutely, having a registration process, I think is, is needed. Your patrol is gonna wanna know exactly what homes are Airbnbs. But I would also broaden it a little bit. Um, we're not that far from Cleveland, we're not that far from I-80. And, you know, we talk about noise complaints and so on, and maybe a party or two. But also be aware that as crime continues, um, there have been Airbnbs that have been used for distribution. So keep that in mind, um, as we kind of look at this, that uh, we do have some extremes that are out there. So, that's it.
Thank you. Soon as you started talking about it, I started thinking about trafficking.
I know, I did too.
Like immediately, I'm like, oh, that'd be terrible.
True.
Alright, so let's put a pin in that one. And uh, my do-outs will be, I'll be talking to uh Denise and reaching out, seeing if there are any sort of um if, if there's any sort of legal precedence as far as um, a, a revocable conditional use. Cause that is, that's, that's interesting to me. Um, and if anyone else has the time, please do some research, see what some of the other townships are going, going with. And if we see anything that seems like a good fit, I have no problem just modifying it and debating it. I mean, that's usually what we end up doing. No sense in reinventing the wheel.
We did look at, didn't we look at the Peninsula Township?
I got at least three or four.
I think I sent one or two additional links of.
One's from Boardman, Ohio.
Yeah, I, I submit.
Boardman Township.
Boardman and Peninsula, and there was another one.
I ought to take the file out later in the week or first of next week sometime.
Okay, awesome. After that, I think it might make sense, based on what um, what Marcus brought up, was the, the shared driveways. Um, I think it kind of can tie in, cause it's, it's not necessarily just about shared driveways. It's more of what you, you talked about in this topic of, alright, how do we find ways for the larger plats to be compensated for them without breaking them up into two-acre or smaller lots? And the, I, I understand your, your shared driveway idea of, alright, well, if we have fifteen houses on a, on a hundred-acre plat instead of fifty, and they don't have to have.
That's too many. I think under, for subdivision standards, I think anything above five is, is a major subdivision. So it'd even have to be like four or five, even that, I think you could create the economic value.
Yeah.
How do you envision this? Like two houses on the same one as a bed and breakfast and the other one's the owner or something along that?
I, I think.
We'd have a drive coming in and kind of.
This was totally unrelated to short-term housing. But, but it, yeah, they're, they're totally unrelated, but at, at the same time, it drives to something that is I think a lot of people in the township are looking at, is like, alright, how do we stop these things from being broken up? And if you have a shared driveway, it doesn't have to be a one-lane driveway, it can be two cars wide easily. But because it's a shared driveway, it doesn't have to conform to road standards.
So why don't we, why don't we step back, because we have two new members, plus the, I don't think Mr. Manley was here last time either. So what the, right now, if you remember under, let's say, an R-1 district, a, a house has to have a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot setback from the front of the road. Or if you have a rear lot, flag lot, you can have a fifty-five-foot setback, or fifty-five-foot front yard setback. What I was commenting on, there, there's a lot of parcels out here that are, let's say, fifty to seventy acres. And when you see a development go in, that's generally the starting point for new developments. And so what if we could do something that would allow that lot to be broken up? But not to be broken up into two-acre lots? And how do we do that in a way that economically makes sense? And so what if we allow for a shared driveway where you didn't have to meet the road standards? You have a shared driveway and you can split that fifty, sixty, seventy-acre lot into four or five parcels, each of ten acres or twelve acres, whatever it is. And then, you know, what's the value of a ten or twelve-acre lot here in Hinckley? Probably starting out at least four hundred, maybe six hundred thousand. So you could take maybe a sixty or seventy-acre lot that might be a two-million-dollar value. You can break it up into four or five parcels, and you could still extract the value that a developer would, you know, the same thing that a developer could. But you won't have two-acre lots, you'll have ten-acre lots. And so do we wanna look into doing something like that, where we're providing something other than the standard two-acre lot subdivision as an option?
You envision like three or four houses effectively using the same drive in some method?
Correct. And then we allow that in conservation developments. We have a common drive language in our conservation developments. But it's only for conservation developments. We don't allow shared drives on standard two-acre lots. Uh, absent, there are some because of variances that have occurred.
Well, some of it happened before, some of the issues that happened a long time ago.
But now you, you just don't have that option. And so that's what got me thinking.
That's, I think, an interesting concept. I, but I don't know how. You know, the, my only thing is, what problem are we creating ten years down the road?
Yes.
When the people decide they're not getting along with each other, that occasionally happens and but that's no reason not to consider it, I mean.
And, and that's the same thing true, if you remember Simo, Simoody's most recent development, I forget the name of it.
The private, private road?
Not Rock Ridge, the one up on West One Thirty.
Yeah.
The new.
Forget the name of it.
It's a private road.
Yeah, I disagree with that completely, but it is.
But, and you're gonna have the same issue with conflict potentially with thirty or twenty-five homeowners.
Based on where some of the BZA, uh, homeowners have gone, could happen in five years too.
Oh, yeah.
So I, the, the one thing that I'm, I'm very cautious about is you look at what happened with with conservation developments, where you came into it originally with altruistic ideas of, alright, let's maintain the, the community feel, it's very rural, and we're gonna keep more greenery and everything, and then the developer said, okay, well, we can do that, but we're not putting it behind the greenery, we're gonna keep everything up close to the road and completely destroy the rural feeling. And so now I'm sitting here trying to figure out, alright, what, what angles does this open up? That a developer is now going to find a way to put even more in? That's my concern. Because I'm not familiar enough with what, what is possible. As far as if we said, let's have, sure, you guys can have shared common drives. Alright, well, now this is a two-acre lot, and this is a two-acre lot, let's put in a common drive and now, it, it originally would have been, it, it might have originally been unbuildable, but now because we don't have to have a driveway, we have a secondary site for a sewer or for a septic, so hey, now we can get an extra house in there.
Right. I, I think it would have to be something very similar to what we do for a flag lot, right? And we, we allow flag lots. Uh, they have to be a seven-acre minimum, and you would have to set some sort of minimum acreage, just like a flag lot. Only instead of a flag lot where it's a fifty-five-foot front yard width, you would ha, and seven acres, you would have, let's say, so if, if the driveway has to be twelve feet, which I think is a minimum driveway width in, in our township, and then you've got five foot on each side. So let's say it's a twenty-foot total frontage that you have to have, you would subdivide that by however many lots there are, four or five. And you'd say they get away with three or four feet of frontage, as long as the lot is ten acres. So you can have a shared driveway, you have to have a minimum of ten acres. Um, and you have to have a minimum frontage that's equivalent to what you would need for a driveway. You can make that frontage number, whatever, but I'm saying it would be three or four feet of frontage. That, so that would be essentially a new type of flag lot, but you're creating a large parcel. Because let's say, let's take Rock Ridge, for instance, you know, the frontage might only be enough for two or three homes if you have to accommodate a, a. Enough for two or three homes if you have to accommodate a a flag lot. But if you allow for a shared driveway situation, they could accommodate a few more.
Would be complicated then, it would be alright. This or the driveway needs maintenance.
It's a shared driveway, they're under contract, it would be between those homeowners and whatever they're. Just like an HOA or like the private street that you're going to see. That's a contract between the parties, we're not involved in that.
You say that, but.
The private street is that in ten years, fifteen years, if that, they're gonna be coming, hey, we need road maintenance and. The township's going to be at that point, you know, what are you doing?
Well, I know in where we were in Florida, there was a lot of common privates and you they the uh. Well, the city had the right to assess all the property owners. Was was part of the deed.
Inspector Wilson, do you ever get any, I mean, we have plenty of common drives in Hinkley, do you ever get any calls on them?
Well, the the common, most of the common drives we have are because Odette wouldn't. Maybe allow uh a drive they wanted close to the neighbor or something. And uh, there's there's, most of the common drives were put in place before I took the job.
But I'm just wondering if you get calls about not someone not maintaining them, do you get calls between neighbors?
No, the calls we get is is can we do it, but uh.
Can we do share?
Never had a call about it, you know, somebody complaining about their neighbors, that's kind of uh up to them, you know. Usually they have some kind of a contract or written agreement, but uh, no, I've never had anything like that.
So are we differentiating between a common drive and a shared drive or is that the same?
Common drive and a shared drive would be one.
Yeah, I've taken it as the same.
So when we look at the definitions. Uh, it does have, a common drive serves no more than three family residential lots.
And that's because, so again, the only place that we allow common drives are in the conservation development.
Right.
So that definition was written for them.
Okay, so I mean, could you, could you limit it then as well? Could you limit how many houses?
That's what I, that's what I was saying, you you would limit it by the acreage one, you could limit it by just saying how many on the common drive. And three is, I think there's that hard limit of uh, I I I forget if the m- major subdivision is. Five lots or more than five lots, so that would be the other limitation is. At some point on the county level, it becomes a major subdivision and whatever that number is, seems like a hard cut. As to what I would say would be.
They already did the work, gotcha.
Yeah, cause they've already defined what a minor subdivision is and in the standards you have to go through for a minor versus a major. I mean, it's five, but I don't remember if it's five is a major or if it's more than five is a major.
Okay.
So this is, this is gonna be bouncing around, but um, between. Shared or common drives, um, potentially allowing for. The B M Bs, what other ideas would anyone have that would allow us to. Make it easier for the large plots to remain. Large.
So I think we can loosen up with the the agro tourism. I don't know.
We don't have really much say over agro tourism.
Yeah, basically. We don't, we don't, we we can't stop it, so I mean, like if someone, if if someone wants to. Do agro tourism, then they they can, is is kind of where it comes down to. Um, we just can basically say, alright, make sure it's safe.
Can we?
Basically, the the, I can't the uh.
There's a whole, remember, I every time I go to a farm, there's one of those big signs that says, this is an inherently endangered activity. And you know, you're, you do it at your own risk, so.
Yeah, I I recall something about um, the the parking, just that it had to have, it didn't even have to be improved, you just had to have enough space for it.
That could be.
It's it was something along those lines, but um, yeah, so I I don't know. And and we can't really entice it either, um, we we can't offer any sort of breaks or anything, certainly no- nothing more than um. The ag exemption, which we don't even offer anyways, that's. That's county.
It's state.
Is it?
Egg, yeah.
But I do like where where your head is of like trying to, alright, how how can we make sure that these larger plots. Don't become cookie cutter developments. I I genuinely believe that's like, I I can't tell you how many people have told me they drive past. A couple of places not to be named and it drives them insane.
I mean, it's just that we know most of the farmers in Hinkley are, you know, they have the large parcels are sixty years plus.
Yep.
So, and many of those, I don't have generations that wanna take over. Or they have younger children, but they don't wanna take it over, so what happens to these parcels, they get sold off at some point and uh. Even many people who could afford that much property really don't want that much property.
You know, in Granger, they do um, some, a lot of co-op farming. Which there's nothing here precluding it, I mean, they they certainly can, um, it's just whether or not. It's enough. You know.
Granger has more almost continuous farms than Hinkley has, Hinkley's farms are more spread out and that makes it more challenging for a co-op.
Any thoughts, Michelle?
No, I I like the thought of uh, uh, trying to figure out ways to keep the large lots, I'm not sure if the shared drive is the answer, but. I think it's a, it's a good, you know, it's a beginning.
It's a good start to a conversation.
Right.
Yeah.
But I do, I I'd like to see the larger lots remain anyway. I'm not sure if that's gonna change a developer though, I don't know.
And and I guess that's, that's, I I don't. Look at things from that perspective, I've never been in those shoes, so I don't know how to look at it and say, alright, well. Yeah, but I could do this, this and this, and I don't. That's where I struggle with it of.
Well, they're looking at their, their dollar figure.
Well, yeah, and and.
And uh, Matt's proposal was. Not Matt, Marcus, look at him, uh, Marcus's proposal had the same dollar figure of if if a developer would get it. And in that sense, yes, it would be similar, but. Uh, we heard Mr. Simone say, you know, he doesn't care.
Well.
So.
But to put in a common drive is substantially less overhead. So really, it's it's not about, okay, let's say I can, I can get two million to. For for this property, but then I'm gonna make it into a, you know, a. A a a hundred house division or or uh, development or I can. Put in. Call it a couple hundred thousand and I can get the same profit out of it.
And that's just it, I I think that even if you have a shared lot, you know, shared driveway. You're going to see developers buying the parcels, it's just what is the most economically viable use for that property? From their perspective at that point, and maybe the more economically viable, you know, the the more economically beneficial. Use is a shared driveway in which then we get ten acre lots. Or maybe the more economically beneficial use is a subdivision. And we we can't stop them from converting that to a subdivision, but we can maybe for some of them incentivize them to do something else. But at the end of the day, it's even even if we do a shared driveway, it's not preventing the developers from purchasing, it's going to be mostly developers. That initially outlay the two million dollar capital to then split it up into four or twenty-five houses.
Yep.
Mr. Wilson, who do you typically, you said that people ask you about this, correct?
I'm sorry.
You you said that people ask you this question about the shared driveway often, about wanting it?
Yeah, not often, but uh. From time to time, you know, so a lot of, not a lot of people, but several people have looked at. Ten acre, twenty acre lots and wanna make a family compound.
But but that's what it is, it's twenty and under, it's not. It's not forty or fifty.
No.
Okay.
And and I don't see for for twenty and under or even thirty and under that. This is, that that doesn't achieve anything for us because the developer's not looking for twenty.
Right.
I'm trying to get to what's another option for those sixty, seventy acre lots. That make them so that it becomes affordable, do something other than two acre lots.
You know, and I also. The the pragmatic part of me is also looking at it as, okay, are we actually creating more? Developable land. Because there are plenty of lots where you can buy it and without a shared drive. You're only getting one house on that. Because you've got really challenging terrain. With no way of getting another. A- any sort of frontage on the road. And so now if we create a shared drive and it's a fifty, sixty, eighty acre lot. Oh, well, now we can get eight homes in there instead of just one. And so we're, I really, we're kind of sitting here talking about theoretical.
But remember, subdivision doesn't, if if you put in a road subdivision, you wouldn't have to have all that frontage. So you talked about, well, you don't have the frontage, but for a road subdivision, you also don't need that frontage. Right, so you can still have a small frontage on this eighty acre lot, could get multiple two acre lots out of it.
I think the other thing you've gotta consider too is our safety forces, you know, when we present a site plan. We send that to the police and the fire department and uh, fire department's got some big trucks. And uh, they they work those site plans over pretty good. Uh, so uh, I I'd be curious to know what our cheese thinks of a common drive was.
It's a good perspective.
So my plan for to to continue going through the uh, common drive language would be to. First go and get Chief Carson Ball's um, opinion on it, like is this something that. Creates a a significant problem, if it does, I mean, that kind of kills it on the vine. Um, but if it doesn't, then it's something that we can come back and revisit and see, alright, is this something that. Will work, um, if I'm gonna call Denise about um. About the short term rentals, I may as well ask her about any sort of common drive language as well. Just another part of a conversation, not a not a problem, li- as as you stated, we already have common drive in the book.
I say, let me just refer to the page that we at least remember where that is, uh, oh, here, page fifty-one, just so everyone knows.
Uh, just for, as everyone's verification, I'll I'll read it. Common drives, and this is specific to um, the two conservation development. And it says, uh, common drive shall be permitted in compliance with the following requirements. A common drive shall serve no more than three units. Common drive shall extend from a public or private street and shall not connect to any other existing or planned public or private street. The design and layout of the common drive shall provide adequate and safe access. To the intended units as determined by the township police and fire departments. And the Midida County Engineering Code for Subdivision Development. Public right of ways are not required for common drives, however, utility easements may be required along the length of the common drive. Dead end drives providing access to more than two units shall be designed with a turnaround. Whenever a private street and or common drive is included in the conservation development, deed restrictions shall be required. And shall specifically include the following language, quote, the underside grantees hereby acknowledge that he, she, they. Understand that the premises described herein is located on a non-dedicated private street. Or common drive, and further, the grantees understand that no government body is responsible for care and maintenance of said private street or common drive. That's it. So, pretty um. Clear. And so specifically what I was talking about um, before about potentially creating more. Developable land is if it is a. Call it a sixty acre flag lot. That they can't put a road on that frontage. They can't have a public road going back there, so it would have to be a common drive, and now you're looking at, okay. Now we could potentially have six houses back or five houses back here instead of the one that's existing.
That would be, again, that that assumes that you couldn't put a street and there are very few places where a flag lot, you couldn't put. A street, why wouldn't you be able to put a street?
Well, it entirely depends on the frontage that they have.
If they have a flag lot, they have a minimum fifty-five.
New flag lots do. Okay, we can continue to go down that route. And I guess the last thing that we can. Kind of start to kick up some dirt on is uh, probably the ar- architectural design standards. What's that?
So that's a big one to.
Yeah.
Kick up the dirt.
No, I mean, I mean.
The dirt on.
We're not, I mean, we've we've gotten through two topics in uh, about an hour and and I mean, th- these are very preliminary conversations. But I think these are the, these are the big topics that we're we're looking to really get knocked out. The architectural design standards, I think that's gonna be something that it's gonna require work sessions, consultants. And really just wanna know, is it something that as a as a commission, we want to undertake? And we've we've seen obviously the uh, the impending um, development here in downtown Hinkley. Is it something that that we're looking at and saying, alright, this is the, this is how we want to have the town center look? And it, I'm I'm saying town center, it could be any of the business districts, um, but. Is this the aesthetic we're going for? Um, or is it just, alright, let's continue, let things go the way that they were going? I I still remember when the um, the gun shop opened, what like? Thirty years ago with the the wood front and.
A one room schoolhouse.
What's that?
That was an old one room schoolhouse.
Was it?
Yeah, it was moved there, yeah.
Okay, and uh.
Building was moved there?
I I, well, I'm, so the historical site to give you the background, I can't remember, I don't know, we know where it came from, but it was, it had been a one room schoolhouse. So somebody was using and they moved it there.
I I remember people up in arms over the the look of.
The siding, yeah, putting siding on it, yeah.
And and then now it's gone, people were upset that it's gone, so it's like, there's there's there there's. I I don't know, there's there's not gonna be a simple solution here, um, and if we do undertake it, we're gonna. Make people angry and if we come out with a, if we don't undertake it, we're gonna make people angry. If we come up with a really good look, we're gonna make people angry, if we come up with a horrible look, we're gonna make a lot of people angry. So that's where we are.
Well, what should we decide, what's the most we can make angry or the least we can make angry?
Uh huh.
Straightforward answer, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I I think it's worth um, potentially looking at. Yeah, absolutely. I I think it's worth um potentially looking at. I know originally when it was brought up, I I didn't want to. Because I I very strongly believe in. People having the right to do with their property what they wanna do. Um, but I know a lot of the township, a lot of the people throughout the township, want us to make sure that there is a. Cohesive. Design element to anything that's gonna be coming in new, rather than a mishmash.
I don't even know if it necessarily is the cohesive aspect. It's the idea that someone could come in and they could build a strip mall. Right in the middle of downtown, and there's nothing in our book that would prevent them from doing it.
Hmm hmm.
And so the only thing that we can do to kind of at least discourage that is some level of architecture standards that.
If we wanted to discourage.
If we wanted to discourage it, that would be how we would do it. Um, just as a little asterisk to all this, we we talk about design standards for downtown Hinckley. And I think that that's where the most important. But I do wanna remind everyone that, as of now at least. There's been the money for for the proposal of the interchange up in Brunswick.
Hmm hmm.
And that could lead to the West One Thirtieth, Boston Corner.
Yep.
Having substantially more development on it, because we're only a mile away from that interchange. And we're in a very good place for office space development there. If someone wants to build office spaces, because we are a tax-free township. For no re- no local income tax.
Yep.
Um, so that is something that we might wanna consider there, not just with the architecture standards, but remember when we carved out that B-two versus. The um B-three, we split those.
Hmm hmm.
One of the reasons that we wanted to do to do that is to look at the B-two requirements. And right now you can build on eighty percent in the B-two and in the B-three, because those were part of the same uh zoning district. Now they're separated, but we maintain that because we want to revisit those standards. And so it might just behoove us before anything happens. Up up there, and before any any interchange is built, to look at our zoning code and see if we're happy with the B-two area. And maybe that ties into architecture standards, maybe it has absolutely nothing to do with architecture standards, but it is certainly another business district I think we should.
Well, I think, I think if we're, if we're gonna go down the road of architecture standards, I think it would be. Short-sighted to only do one. District with architecture standards. Um, I think if we're gonna do it, we do it for. All of the business districts, and they can be similar but different. And it might be a little bit of copy and paste and editing here and there for the different business districts. Or are you guys thinking, hey, we'll come up with one. Standard and it it applies across the entire township?
I I, you know, I don't think we need that one standard. I think that when you look at the B-one district, if you were to do anything in the B-one district. It's very close to industrial, so why would we require that B-one district to follow the same architecture standards as town center? Where we're trying to keep things.
But it would still make sense to have some sort of architecture.
It would make sense to, at least while we're doing it, if we're paying a consultant, let's just look at all three of the business districts and and evaluate them. But I I don't think that we would need to apply the same standard or the same rigidity.
Well, I mean, I I'm, again, looking at um Boston West One Thirtieth. To your point, I don't think most people would wanna strip mall right where we are. I don't know that there would be a tremendous amount of objection in that business district because. You've got strip malls on two other corners, in that that same corner on on opposite sides. So I don't think there'd be a whole lot of objection that are kind of fits. Um, whereas down in, you know, B B-one down in um Bellis and Hinckley Hills, you 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 get some pushback on that. So I I think we we would have to come up with some design standards for B-one. Even though it's right next to industrial. Unless we change what's going down, going on there. So oddly enough, a lot of these things are tied together. Kind of a knot right now. Now, Marcus, when when we first started looking at some of these, you came in with um with some. I think there were handouts of, or or a presentation of some sort, where you're showing the different types of housing for senior housing and group homes and that kinda stuff.
I pulled up the comprehensive plan for that portion.
No, I think, I think Cindy had some designs that she brought in.
Okay.
For.
Right.
Yeah.
On their website.
Right.
Illustrations of all different architectures.
Okay.
Right, and then I brought in the one.
You had done a fair amount of research.
Right, the one township down by where you grew up or something and brought in those. I didn't realize that you lived there. Yeah, Westchester, yeah. So we brought, we brought up those items, but that's a, that's quite a bit of work. And then when we did it though, we realized. There wasn't any can. Anything to kind of solidify what kinda architectural structure we would wanna use, because. The town center doesn't have any one architectural structure.
Which in in a sense, it actually. Kind of. Highlights the need for it.
Right, it's a vision for the future.
Yeah, not where we are.
Is right.
Yeah.
Right, but how do you? How do you start saying you want this, which is what the the folks who. Are putting in the big development here downtown.
Hmm hmm.
Brought up saying, you know, you said you wanted, uh, what was it?
Western Reserve.
Reserve, and they pointed and said, there are no Western Reserve.
Yeah.
In Hinckley. You wanted Georgian. There are none.
Yep.
So that's, you know, it's hard to. To say a requirement.
Hmm hmm.
It's to start from scratch, yes, right? But to say you want it to continuing look, the look of Hinckley, you can't use that language, cuz there is really no look of Hinckley.
Uh, and I think to your point, that's the problem with the current codes. We say we want it to look similar to what's around, but that gives. Developers free latitude to do whatever they want.
We we want to look quaint and inviting, but we don't want it to look like, I don't know.
And and I'll say that many cities have, many cities have done this, seen a transformation where, you know, in the eighties, seventies and eighties, they built whatever they could. And then cities started to say, wait, we wanna make ourselves more historic in nature. And then they started imposing all these rules. And then it's taken thirty or forty years, but you see transformations of these. Uh, you know, the the areas to look the way that they want. And we just have to realize that it's not an overnight transformation. It's a very long-term.
Hmm hmm.
Transformation of of whatever the area is.
Right. I think architectural standards are are needed.
Is that one where we wanna start on it, or is that one where we want to have a consultant start?
I think we would wanna meet with a consultant before we even.
That's what I would think.
Before we even touch it.
That's right.
Um, and. The the reason I brought it up this evening is to see, alright, where where's everyone's thought? Cuz if it's something that everyone just said, you know what? No. Alright, we can scrap it. But it seems like more and more everyone's saying, alright, yeah, let's, let's take a crack at it. Is that how you're feeling, Mr. Manley?
Yeah, I I think Marcus brought up a good point. There's a really good chance five, six, seven years down the. Like the West Hundred and Thirtyth Boston Road thing. Will materialize and here's a chance to get a handle a little bit.
Hmm.
Um, what do we think we should, we want up there, cuz we can't affect what's there, but when all that's torn down.
Yep.
Uh, or or revamped or however, cuz I'm sure we're gonna have a hotel or two up there. Uh, are there gonna be big ones or little ones? I don't know. Probably another restaurant or two or three on on our side because of the tax.
Hmm hmm.
It's an opportunity for us to.
John, what do you think?
I think there's a reason why all these, all these topics are here, is because, you know, kinda like you said, it's a, it's a knot. Um, but we all identify them as stuff that we're gonna be looking at going forward, and we'd like to get a a lasso around it now. Uh, before someone else decides. Um, looking at all this, at all the topics, the the two that we talked about. Short-term rentals and the shared driveways, those are good. Um, but what are we gonna, what's gonna affect us more? What's gonna affect the day-to-day of the people that live in Hinckley? And that's gonna be, that's gonna be the design that we set the template for the rest of our growth. There's no doubt about it. So I would uh. The other stuff's important for different reasons, but I I would uh definitely consider it a priority.
Mark, um, I think Cindy, we probably won't get to architectural review like. In the next couple of months, if we're gonna be focusing on. If we're gonna knock out short-term rentals and potentially share driveways, but. When we're ready, we can ask Cindy to potentially ask the other trustees, hey, do we have enough money to bring in a consultant on this?
It'd be enough lead time, so we can.
Okay. What's, what's enough lead time?
I, we hope maybe a couple, three months.
Okay.
I mean, I've gotta. Kinda get with our fiscal officer, see what the budget and.
Alright.
Go through that process.
We'll, we'll connect offline and see, I mean. Figure out, are we making good progress on the the other items as as that comes up in the order? But are there any um? Questions or concerns with kinda going through that order there? Going with uh short-term rentals, shared driveways, and then into the architectural review?
Do you think we should initiate the um. Initiate actions to to see if we have the money to do it for the short, for the architectural design? Rather than wait till we get there and then go forward?
I'll do my legwork.
I I'm sorry, I can't, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I will, as I indicated to.
As I indicated to Matt, I'll start conversations with our fiscal officer and then with the trustees. So that we can figure out what kinda budget we can be talking about.
Right.
Okay.
Then, yeah, I think, Michelle's probably, Michelle's probably on on spot on there, like, alright, let's see if this is gonna be an option in three months.
Hmm hmm.
If it's gonna be an option in three months, if it takes us four months to get there, it's not a big deal, but I can't imagine. Three months is too little time.
Right.
You know?
No, we're good.
Alright, awesome. So. With that said, I think we're at a good breakpoint for the evening. Um, like I said, I'll be going to uh. Talk with Denise and also reach out on the legal side, see what we can do specifically around the short-term rentals. Um, wanna get uh Chief Grossenbach's uh opinion on common drives. And uh. So those are gonna be what I'm looking into in the next month, in addition to trying to find some other verbiage from other townships that are um. Kinda struggling with some of the same things. And if you guys would do the same, look at uh any sort of verbiage that makes sense. Um, we'll, we'll be in a good place next month. Um. That kinda covers it for me. Michelle, you got anything? Marcus?
No.
Dave?
Nothing.
John?
Good.
Alright, um, Mr. Wilson, do you have a report for us or anything?
We're, you know, we've got a couple of uh. Uh, conditional users coming up before the VGA. I have one in April.
Then are those the two businesses that are operating?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, uh, you know, the language in in the code, I think it's worked very well so far.
Okay.
But I just mentioned, as, you know, if I see anything once we go before the VGA and stuff, I'll bring it back to you, but. I think the language is good.
Alright, and um Dave, I don't know if you uh saw from last month, but. Um, Tom came up and and told us about uh.
Street here.
What's that?
Down the street here, is that what you're talking?
No, there's, there's um two businesses that are operating within the township in residential property.
Land landscaping business?
One, one is a landscaping business, and the other was.
Well, it's a electrical contractor.
Yeah. And so he kinda brought those to our attention. As well, there were the the Airbnbs that, but that was a totally separate issue.
I saw some minutes.
Okay, yeah, and so that's, that's what he's referencing there. Um, Cindy, anything for me? Alright, well, if there's no, eh, oh, anything from the public? Anything anyone else wants to bring up? No? Alright, outstanding. Well, uh, if that takes care of it, then uh I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you wanna announce our next regular meeting? I think that normally.
Great point. Yep, I do. Um, hold on, work my phone.
It's on the agenda.
Sure is. Uh, next regular zoning commission meeting will be April fourth at seven PM. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Marcus.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-six.
I don't know if you.